Good evening, everyone. It is time to start. It is Monday, July 24, 2017 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I will call to order and request roll call, please.
Grenier?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Balick? Staton?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Udro?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public appearances and item A, discussion possible action regarding proclamation, declaring the Village of Oregon to be a dementia-friendly community. We have a recommended motion, which I'll read in just a minute. I would like to recognize people who have worked on this at the senior center. Allison Kelch from Santa Crest to White. Judy Knudsen, right back here from the chamber, has helped out. Ann Dellman is right beside Judy, and thank you, Ann, we appreciate that. And Rachel has picked up some at the senior center also, so thanks to all of you for that. So the recommended motion before the board is to adopt the proclamation, declaring the Village of Oregon to be a dementia-friendly community.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. So that is before us, and we will read that proclamation. I will start that, and we'll just go down around the table like we have. There's one really long paragraph getting down the way, so be ready for that. Okay, so this is a proclamation declaring the Village of Oregon to be a dementia-friendly community. Whereas dementia currently affects 110,000 people in Wisconsin, and this number is expected to continue to climb. Women over age 60 have a 1 in 6 chance of developing dementia, and men have a 1 in 11 chance. The percentage of those over 85 with dementia is almost 50 percent, and?
Whereas the Village of Oregon has made a significant commitment to older adults with dementia and their families through support services and programs offered at the Oregon Area Senior Center and beyond, and?
Whereas the Alzheimer's and Dementia Alliance of Wisconsin has been leading an initiative to establish dementia-friendly communities to help increase awareness of dementia and decrease the stigma for those who live with the disease that causes memory and thinking impairments, and?
Whereas a dementia-friendly community works to improve the quality of life for all those who are affected, both for people with memory challenges and their caregivers, by educating people about how to recognize and best assist a person with dementia, and?
Whereas businesses, organizations, churches, and village departments started receiving dementia-friendly training in the spring of 2016, and over two dozen such organizations have completed the training, including all three QuickTrip stores, Oregon Area Fire and EMS District, The Chocolate Caper, Walgreens Pharmacy, Oregon Hometown Pharmacy, Oregon Rotary Club, Holy Mother of Constellation Catholic Church, Wisconsin Cheese Originals, Normandy Resources LLC, Miller Dental, Ludkey Storm Mackey Chiropractic, St. John's Lutheran Church, Oregon Public Library, Oregon Area Senior Center, State Bank of Cross Plains, Karate America, Oregon Chamber of Commerce, Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse and Ice Cream Parlor, People's United Methodist Church, Hillcrest Bible Church, First Presbyterian Church, Oregon Village Hall, Dad's Barber Shop, Gary Willey's Auto and Tire Center, and Oregon Community Bank. And training is pending for the Oregon Police Department and the Oregon School District.
Whereas training will continue to be available to groups and businesses in the Village of Oregon.
It is hereby proclaimed that the Village of Oregon has, through the efforts of many dedicated local individuals, as well as the Alzheimer's and Dementia Alliance of Wisconsin, become a dementia-friendly community, and the Village of Oregon joins the ranks of other Dane County communities who have made a commitment to address the needs of its community members who live with dementia and their caregivers. This proclamation is duly adopted by the Village of Oregon Village Board this 24th day of July, 2017. Any comments or questions? I would make one. We recently, I've had a family member who recently passed away who had dementia, and once this was found out several years ago, the interactions of the family changed with her very much, and it made a huge difference, just understanding what was happening and being able to communicate and have the right level of expectations for dealing with that person. So again, I applaud the people who have helped with this and the community for taking part in it, and we appreciate it very much. So any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, Darlene, you had a comment.
Oh, I just think this is a great opportunity for people to see, and I think it's a great thing for our community to do.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set. Again, thanks to those that were involved, we appreciate it. You bet. So item B, for reference, is a copy of the recently approved Village Sanitary Sewer Backup Reimbursement Policy. It's on the village webpage, which takes us to item C, discussion possible action regarding consideration of claim of $480.53 shown Christianson, tenant at 402 East Netherwood Street. The recommended motion is to approve that reimbursement amount contingent on Christianson executing a release pursuant to Village of Oregon Sanitary Sewer Backup Reimbursement Policy.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? And just for public who is watching, we have discussed this at length at other meetings also, in getting to this point, and we're pleased to be at this point. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, discussion possible action, consideration of claim of $17,304.67 for Debbie Tennyson, 200 Ash Street. Recommended motion is to approve the reimbursement to Debbie Tennyson in the maximum allowable amount of $5,000 contingent on Tennyson executing a release pursuant to Village of Oregon Sanitary Sewer Backup Reimbursement Policy.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Did you want to say anything, Debbie?
I want to thank you all.
We haven't voted yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now you can.
I appreciate that effort you guys put in. I'd like to say I have peace of mind on it, but I'll call you.
Okay, good. And thanks for staying in touch with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item E, discussion possible action, consideration of claim of $1,435 for Pam Lund, 205 Ash Street. Recommended motion, approve that reimbursement to Pam Lund, the amount of $1,365 contingent on Lund executing release pursuant to Village of Oregon Sanitary Sewer Backup Reimbursement Policy.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Just in time. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, they passed. Okay, so the next item is approval of minutes, which we have none before us tonight. Item five is approval of vouchers. And we have vouchers tonight in the amount of $419,069.86.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions this evening? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Udro?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, item six, community input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board tonight? Okay, Jerry? Welcome.
We have a couple properties over on Johnson Street, and we're fortunate to be on the north side of Johnson as opposed to the neighbors across the street who are getting flooded out from the former church parking lot driveway. These guys are working when it's raining many hours. They had three pumps going, pumping eight days in a row, and just trying to mitigate the water coming into their yards. And I think we need to address that in some fashion. These are older gentlemen, up to their waist in some instances, in water. There's, I drove up the driveway, the former driveway, going south onto the church property from Johnson Street, and there is huge ruts, washouts from the rain. And I understand that, you know, there's, we've had a, you know, a lot of rain, but still, there's got to be some mitigation that the village can do. And I know Jeff is on it, but, you know, these guys are getting tired, and they've had three pumps running eight days in a row, trying to mitigate the water there, so.
You taking a look at that, Jeff, or have, or will?
Well, I've been looking at it. I don't know if you want me to comment on it or not, but it's, we did meet with one of the neighbors and installed some sandbags out there. Apparently, when the church was there, when the old church was there, there were some old sandbags that had been placed out at one time, and when the, we had asked the contractor to remove everything from the site, and they did. And so we did place those sandbags back for that individual. And quite honestly, when I look at the contours, I mean, things go into these people's backyards. It's just the natural way of things. But the plan is, when that area is developed, we have storm drains over in that area that will be taking that out and dealing with that. But we really haven't done anything significant to change the contours of the property or anything, especially in the areas where it's flooding.
Okay, and we probably shouldn't go too far into it since it's not on the agenda.
I agree, but yes, we are.
The information.
Yeah, we're looking into it, and if we can build a library, we could fix a lot of it.
Yeah, okay. See how that works.
I think, you know, some of it can be mitigated with, you know, a backhoe and also some gravel, building a berm back there, a temporary berm, if you will. But again...
I'll walk it, I'll walk it sometimes.
Jeff, take a look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven, proclamations and announcements. Board comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to staff comments. Want to comment on this?
I have one thing that, for meeting, we have a Public Works Committee meeting next Monday evening, but we are in the final throes of getting the easement agreements with fiduciary for the project, as known as Legend Hills at Bergamot, which are those 15 lots that were along there. There were two easements dealing with the private, or the path, if you remember right, there was a connector path and everything. They brought this to our attention late last week and said, we need to have these signed, and we need to, we need to have this voted on and approved before we can close on it. And I just got an email from Matt this afternoon that said fiduciary's attorneys thinks they will want a special meeting to approve the easement agreement. Can I explore the dates with the board tonight? So, there's a possibility, and Mike mentioned this before he left, that we could try to hold a 15-minute meeting prior to the Public Works Committee meeting at 4:45 on next Monday, if that time would work. There's only three members here for the committee. I know, Steve, you're out of town. But Jerry should be here, well, he'll be here for that meeting tonight. So otherwise, we would be going to the next, which would be the seventh, which is a regularly scheduled meeting. But I believe, based on my memory, is that was going to be too late for them for closing.
Well, I'm here every Monday, so you can schedule it any Monday that you want to schedule it.
So the question is, do we want a meeting, a short meeting at 4:45 next Monday?
I'll be here anyway.
Yes, I will not be.
Doug will be here.
For the entire board, correct?
Yeah, it would be a board meeting.
Yeah, it'd be a board meeting. So we'd be noticing it and everything.
Is there any way we could do it at 5:00 and then bump the Public Works meeting to 5:15?
We could do, we could do that, too.
Okay.
It's already going to be a late evening, but that's not a, we can do that, too, if that helps out.
I just, I started a new job, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the timeframe of getting here at 4:45 or not yet.
Okay.
Still working on the traffic details.
So why don't, we'll schedule it for 5:00 o'clock on Monday, the 31st.
Okay.
And it just be a short meeting, and then we'll put Public Works at 5:15.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on these dates? I think we've all know where those on the calendar are already, so you're welcome, Jeff, thank you. Item A, communication miscellaneous business, information only, North Borough closure.
Yep, that was just, just kind of as a heads up, this is the phase three in the closing of that, and it should be, it will be closed for quite a while now, for the next month at least, depending on if we can, and honestly, the contractor's been struggling with rain, and now an abundance amount of groundwater and stuff. Just wanted to tell people, I know there's been people going around it. The police were, we're going to give a few days grace, which probably ended Saturday, and then start issuing tickets after that. So I'm thankful for the days of grace because my wife was a recipient of it. Not proud of that, but that's, yeah.
So are we on target to get Jefferson and North Borough open high school schools?
Honestly, I think we're on target for, without any trouble, Jefferson Street.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned with where we'll end up at on, we met with the contractor this morning. He still feels we're fine getting into the end of August. But you know how contractors' timeframes and your timeframes work, so. But we're still technically on schedule, but I would expect maybe, it depends on how easy the culvert goes in. Right now, with all this rain, it's just not been, it has not been a good time. So it's actually probably been beneficial that they aren't ahead of schedule and trying to put in a culvert till we... Right now, with all this rain, it's just not been a, it has not been a good time, so it's actually probably been beneficial that they aren't ahead of schedule and trying to put in a culvert two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So, we'll see.
Okay.
It'll work together.
Okay, thank you. Item B, youth center information for April, May, and June. Looks like things are still busy and prosperous there. Are there any comments or questions here? We appreciate the job that Diane and the others do that work there. Item C, police department reports. Say, Chief Yule is not able to be here. If you have any questions, we can contact him and he will get back with you. Item D, discussion possible action regarding disposal of police department's old safe. Recommended motion, approve the disposal of police department's old safe.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This is kind of a routine thing for disposing of equipment. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion possible action regarding addendum to contract number eight three seven hundred with Dane County. Recommended motion, approve the addendum to contract number eighty-three seven hundred with Dane County for an additional five thousand dollars for senior centers My Meal My Way program at Ziggy's.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments here, Rachel?
That's just been a hugely successful program and, you know, kind of just a pass through for the funding, but they wanted to make sure that Ziggy's was going to get their payments for the program through the rest of this calendar year.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Can I ask how many, how many folks you have eating there?
Um, you know, the numbers vary, but I would say probably averaging around forty
Wow.
people a week.
So the five thousand represents an increase in number of people using the service?
It represents the fact that there are more people eating there on average than Dane County anticipated initially. It's been more successful and so they had initially set aside a certain amount of monies that they thought would cover the whole calendar year, reimbursing Ziggy's at six dollars a meal that is served. And partway through the year, we came to the realization that wasn't going to be enough money to carry us through the end of the year, so they granted us another five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the contract with Dane County for an additional five thousand dollars for the senior centers My Meal My Way program at Ziggy's. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, discussion possible action regarding task order number three to agreement for professional services with Rukert and Milkie. The recommended motion is to approve the task order number three for Rukert and Milkie, the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for evaluating utility alternatives, lift stations for serving property east of Highway fourteen. Funding will come from the sanitary sewer fund and closing of TIF number two funds.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, this is, just for information, we are kind of seeing a lot more activity out for not only pushing in that direction, but, you know, for the, for many years, we've looked at this as a possible, to be served by an interceptor, a very large diameter gravity sewer. And the problem with those is they're very expensive to install because they're, they're set deep and they have to be very flat because you're trying to reach a very long way. My predecessor was very opposed to pump stations. I, I'm kind of neutral on them. I believe they have their time and purpose. And the idea that possibly, looking at a pump station over in that area would allow things, maybe the development occur over there for a cheaper, you know, at a, at a cheaper cost. Because now we're, pump stations, they have gravity sewers to go to that, and then the discharge of that is like six feet deep instead of fourteen, twenty, and thirty feet deep below the surface. So this, this is just a study to look at where a possible location would be and what kind of catchment area and what, what could possibly happen over in that area if we were to expand out in that, that area over there. It's going to take over a lot of what they did years ago, back when Veridian was doing all that work. And the idea was maybe that southeast side TIF would, would be involved over there and everything, so. This is just a good study.
Okay, good. Questions?
Jeff?
Yes?
Some years ago, the planning commission, I think, looked at the same issue. And there is some consideration of a possible subdivision development at the top of MM?
Correct.
Is that still?
That, yeah, we've actually seen a little bit of activity on that and that's kind of what's pushing this a little, because there are portions of that that could gravity drain to our system, but there's questions of whether or not we have the capacity in our system for that expansion. That property is kind of known as the Hofer Land, H-O-F-E-R, and that was where Veridian was, was developing, planning the development up there. So that's kind of part and parcel with this, is we're seeing activity from them as well as we've seen, you know, Eric Grover has been before us and, and other stuff. We've just seen a little more interest in that area. We want to make sure we're properly planning for the future out there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve task order number three for Rukert and Milkie, the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for evaluating utility alternatives, lift stations for serving property east of Highway fourteen. Funding will come from the sanitary sewer fund and closing of TIF two funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, discussion possible action removing trees on village property, the former Methodist Church property. Recommended motion is to provide direction to the director of public works regarding removal of two trees on village property.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm bringing this before you mainly because when we were going through the acquisition of the church property and, and back in, I cannot remember the name of the, the development that was going up there on the hill.
Sanctuary?
Sanctuary thing. I knew it began with S. There was concern over saving trees and, and that type of stuff on the property. And, and I know there's a, I mean, we have some very old trees up there. So before we just went in and started cutting a tree down, I just wanted to bring it before you, just to discuss it. There's actually three trees that we're looking at here. The two of them are right up front at the property there. They're the ones that used to fill the front yard of the church with about six to eight inches of maple leaves every year. And the third tree is the one that's actually in the house lot, that, that, where the house came out, what, ten years ago or so? And that, you know, that tree's pretty straightforward. It's actually been shedding very large branches the last two years. It's, it really has no redeeming shape or structure. It's very tall and it's actually, it's probably more of a threat than anything. So I, I think that's an easy one to take down. I called tree one and tree two. Tree one was brought to our attention. Lots of areas where it's visible rot as it goes up, up there and, and large branches that are dead. It's, it's obviously, I say very old. You see it, it's a very large tree. You'll see my, my daughter agreed to be the model that day on that. And she'd be mortified if she knew she was in this, but, but you can see on that one thing, I have tree one and tree two. Like, your tree one is just definitely, you see areas of rot, you see areas of weakness. The, the Arbor syst, Arbor Systems is, was talking to us about it and, and they were saying, yes, it should come down. They were worried about it being there before the parade. And I said, well, it's been there a hundred and fifty years. Hopefully it'll last through the parade. And it did. My, I'm recommending that we would take tree number one down and that, I looked at tree number two, I don't believe it's, I, I believe it's still actually fairly decent health. But my recommendation would be to take down tree number one and tree number three from this memo. What we'd probably do is contract the tree felling with Arbor Systems and then we would take care of the, the rest of it. It's kind of standard, what we've done before, is we let them handle kind of the rigging and, and more of the touchy work and let us kind of do the grunt work.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Jeff, would it be possible for you to send this memo and the photos to the, to the neighbor, the neighbors, that neighborhood? I'm thinking, do we still have their emails from?
From the sanctuary?
Yeah. Just because this is going to be, this is going to be a touchy subject.
Right.
Because I remember the forty-four thousand people who testified against sanctuary, that they were very concerned about those trees being removed. So I'm afraid that if you just show up with a chainsaw someday, there may be people like hugging the trees and not letting you cut them down.
Correct. Right, and that's kind of why I wanted to bring this here, you know, as far as, I mean, we could, we could do that. I, I mean, I'd.
Or if you want to send it to me, I could send it to some folks.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I think they should get a heads up before they, they come home from work one day and they're down there.
So we could, I mean, we could, if, if you want, and we don't have to take action on this tonight, you know, there's, we, what we could do is send it to, send it to those, that, that neighborhood group. And then say that, that we would ask for action at the thirty-fourth, or sorry, the seventh, August seventh.
I mean, I have no problem with taking action on it. I just want, I just want them to be aware of the decision and why it was made.
Okay.
Because it's a safety.
So you don't necessarily have to see input on it or?
No, I just want them, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of my feeling.
Yeah, no problem with that.
To me, it's completely a safety issue, so if they need to come down, they need to come down. I just want to give them a heads up.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. I, I think the trees are most concerned about are those two big oak trees, or the ones that they?
There's, there's two interior.
I share that, too. Those are great trees.
Yeah, there's one in there, yeah, there's one in there that's just an incredible oak tree.
Yeah.
And it's very healthy and we made sure they protect it very well during the, when they were removing that wall and everything, but. And sugar maples are known to be, to react like this after a while. The, the one kind of positive note is, we're going to try to, instead of just cutting it up in little chunks and everything like that, I've been talking to the wood cycle. Maybe working a deal out where he may take the large portion of it and then we would reserve the right to have several slabs from it. And then ideally, maybe repurpose that in the library.
Yeah.
Either for a desk or a conference room table or something like that. I just think it's kind of unique to the site.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah. If, if you put, if you could, when you send that out to the neighbors, maybe add some more information about, I know you have that little blurb in the email, but a little bit more about what their future use could be. I think they might appreciate that.
Okay.
So Jeff, can you send that out or do you want to?
I will, I'll take, I'll take care of sending that out, yeah, because that should come from, you know, the girl child here.
I think that will go a long ways towards any sort of hate mail. I'm always trying to avoid hate mail.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments here? Okay, good. So we have the motion, and second, to provide direction to director of public works regarding removal of two trees on village property, the former Methodist Church property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Item nine, reported committees. Item A, planning commission meeting from July thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Jeannie, you're up.
Sure, um, these first two items are pretty perfunctory. First one is discussion of possible action regarding certified survey map CSM for eight thirty and eight thirty-six Thompson Drive. So I'd make a motion that we approve the certified survey map for eight thirty and eight thirty-six Thompson Drive.
Second.
There's stuff in our packet if you have any questions, but this was pretty.
Yeah, this, this is very straightforward.
Yeah.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, please.
The second one is very similar. Discussion of possible action regarding certified survey map CSM for seven thirty, seven thirty-six Thompson Drive. So I'd make the motion that we approve the certified survey map for seven thirty and seven thirty-six Thompson Drive contingent on addressing the village engineer's comments.
Second.
And the only difference with this one is they hadn't had a chance to re, to incorporate the comments and reissue it to us before this, so that's why we just have them incorporating the comments in the motion.
Okay. Are there questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, please.
Discussion of possible recommendation to the village board regarding a conditional use permit application submitted on behalf of Recreational Concepts, Inc., applicant, applicants to the Callen family LLC, the owner, to allow for a temporary pool display on the property at ten seventy-five Park Street. So my motion is that we approve the conditional use permit and agreement for ten seventy-five South Park Street for the Callen family LLC tenant, Recreational Concepts, Inc., which incorporates the motion from the planning commission to allow for a temporary pool display on the property located at ten seventy-five Park Street submitted by Recreational Concepts, Inc. And these are the conditions, with the following conditions. Number one, the display will be removed on or before December first, twenty seventeen. Beginning December second, twenty seventeen, a fifty dollar charge will be assessed daily if the display is not removed. Number three, the display must remain safely secured and well-maintained at all times. And number four, the non-conforming signs, signs will be removed immediately.
Second. Thank you.
So the planning commission discusses kind of at length, Jeff, is that his name, from Recreational Concepts?
Yes, yeah, Jeff.
And, um, shared with us that he currently owns that property, that the one where restaurants is on, and it sounds like, he, he said he thought he was going to be building on that property, but I know he's kind of wavering back between the two.
Yeah, he spoke to me and, and, and he's, I, he's pretty solid on his decision. I, I know he's kind of wavered at times, but it, it was more or less hinging on the fact that he was having a hard time incorporating his construction end of his business on that same property as well. So he had looked at possibly going over to Mr. Grover's property and everything, but I think he's, he's made the decision now that he wants to build his showroom and, and retail display there on that property. And then his construction business will actually be at another site. So I'm not sure where that is.
So after, we had a quite a bit of discussion on this and the planning commission, we added all of these conditions. And I think that the prevailing thought was this, this was a good faith effort by the village to help this particular developer get going and to start advertising the fact that his business would be there. We, none of us were very excited about that large pool there, but we decided that we could all live with it until December first. So that's the sum up.
I think that's a great decision. And quite frankly, it looks better than anything else over there.
Well, we decided it wasn't really detracting from scenery.
Someone might, some people might disagree with you on that. I'm not me, but I.
Just to be clear, it's a prefabricated pool that would be sitting on top of the ground.
Oh, it's there already?
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll eventually.
It's been there quite a while.
Yeah, it's been there for a while.
Oh, yes.
He was under the impression that since he owned the property, he could put that there. And then when he was contacted by the village, that outdoor displays were not allowed. He was like, oh, how do I make that right? So then he approved for, or applied for the conditional use permit.
We, we'd received several complaints. We'd received several complaints from people, very vocal individuals that were upset that it was there. And, and we checked the ordinance and yes, it's, you know, it needs to be a conditional use to have that kind of display on that. So we followed through, met with him. He agreed, okay, I'll file a CUP, and it just takes a little bit of time to run through the process.
And I want to say, though, that the one, the one very vocal complaint that we got, she came to the meeting and he addressed her concerns and I felt like she, she felt better about it after he informed her that he was building his. Like, she wasn't excited, but she at least felt like her needs had been addressed.
Well, once that new, if that building goes there, people will be very happy.
Yeah.
They'll forget all about that pool, so.
And Doug, that'll be, his plan is to eventually sync that pool at that location and, and that, so that the area out there would have, you know, like, outdoor displays, outdoor kitchen, you know, the kind of like when you can walk through and see what, you know, design build items that you can incorporate. And it includes this outdoor pool and outdoor kitchen and outdoor other stuff that, you know, will be kind of a display slash outdoor showroom area. So it should look really nice.
Maybe there could be a grand opening for like the village board members to use the pool.
Pool party.
Pool party.
There's no, no, there's no provision for continued use after that date, though. It doesn't look like it.
Uh, no, he's going to be fined fifty dollars a day if that, if he doesn't come down.
Right, but then for next year, that would preclude any possibility then?
Well, he would have to apply for another conditional use permit.
Correct.
I see.
Yeah.
I think his goal is to be building next year.
It's a large enough pool that it requires special, like a crane and a lowboy and everything to come in to be able to move it. So, as he's told us, it costs several thousand dollars for him just to pick it up and move it. So I think. It's like thirty some odd feet long, I think.
It's big.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
How did you not notice that, Doug?
He probably doesn't go outside that way to town.
It's there.
Any questions on this comment, on this motion? Okay, so the motion second, to approve the conditional use permit and agreement for ten seventy-five South Park Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, I'll just keep going. Item B, personnel, public safety and protection committee meeting from June twenty-sixth. The first item is a second discussion of possible action regarding preparing a dangerous animal ordinance. And this is the recommended motion from, from the committee that I will make it, to approve village staff working with village attorney to draft a dangerous animal ordinance that will come before the village board.
Second.
Thank you.
How, how does the motion carry two to zero?
There is only two, of the committee people, there's only two members there.
Is there three total committee members?
Yeah. Jenna and I were there. I can't remember. Who else is on that committee?
So why was this brought up?
Oh, um, yeah, so, um, Chief Yule brought this to, brought this to us and there, we had quite a bit of discussion on it. And we actually had some folks appear as special guest speakers who were like national experts in, especially dog behavior. And so, the, the speaker gave a giant binder of information to the clerk that Matt wasn't here, but Holly was here, the attorney. And so, I guess Chief Yule has, his staff has been responding to a couple. And so, I guess Chief Yule has, his staff has been responding to a couple situations where dogs have attacked each other, and there's no way for him to, under our current ordinances, for him to cite that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve village staff working with the village attorney to draft a dangerous animal ordinance that will come before the village's board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And then, the second item is a discussion and possible action regarding amending villages' nuisance regulations. And so, we are going to hold this over until the August 7th board meeting, when Chief Yule can be in attendance.
Thank you on both of those reports. Jeanie? Item 10, minutes now requiring action, April 25, 2017, Oregon Cable TV Committee Meeting Minutes and Information, and June 14, 2017, Library Board Meeting Minutes and Information. 11, unfinished business, there is none. Item 12, new business, there is none listed. Item 13 is future agenda items that will be coming our way, and item 14 is a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Yeah, it really is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
No, Jeff?